And I'll be done.
Princeton.
Been like eight years.
Yeah.
Well.
Yeah, I have.
And I want to put one other.
I'd be on the face.
That's my birdie's not in fact.
We're, we're not going to.
That was.
I will find that.
Yes, I'm.
He tells all.
You don't have.
What age of the same.
Small guys.
Well, I'm sorry. I'll give you the word that he did some way.
You've got a great time.
Yeah.
And they'll call. City Council, City of Washington, Virginia. September ninth, six P M. We'll begin with our invocation. By Reverend Michael Meadows at the Oak Hill Church for the Brethren, followed by the Brethren's allegiance by Councilman Roger M.
Will you pray with me? Heavenly Father, I come before you in the precious and powerful name of Jesus. Lord, I believe that your presence is here in this council. And Father, I don't know what everyone had to deal with today. But I asked if it is anything that would not bow its knee to your will in this place, that it would do so at this time. Because of your authority over all things. Lord, I pray for this council. I pray, pray for those that have come to meet with this council, and I pray that everything will go according to your will and your purpose. Lord, we look around our country and we see so much division. Lord, I pray that this city, the city of Oak Hill would be the opposite. That we would be a source of unity. And that it would begin with this council. And so, Father God, I pray that your agenda would be known, that it would be heard, and that it would be felt in this place tonight. That everything would be conducted in accordance with your will, your purpose, your plan. Help us as a people to surrender to you. Knowing that if we do, we can do all things. And so, Lord, we give you this time. We give you this city. And we ask that you would do what only you can do. As you move the mountains before us. I pray this in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
I thought. I pray with you.
I'm. And two very. One nomination. Because of this whole. That's all.
Here Charles Briscoe.
Here.
Councilman at large Bill Havas.
Here.
Counselors from Ward one, Terry Van Busker.
Here.
Roger Evans.
Here.
Diana Janey.
Here.
Counselors from Ward two, Tim Buskas.
Here.
To Elder.
Here.
Chris Gill.
Here.
Thank you. You've all read the minutes that you've all sworn. Prepare a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say. Thank you. The motions are properly moved in second. Approval of minutes. All those in favor. Ah, all opposed. Motion is carried. We need to do the same with the treasurer's report. Do you have a motion?
I made the motion to approve the treasurer's report.
I second that.
Motion has been properly moved in second. There we are. Treasurer's report. All those in favor. Ah, all opposed. Thank you very much. Motion is carried. We have a correspondence to this. Thank you very much. We're along in our citizens' comments. A distinguished citizen tonight, and I'm proud to say he's my neighbor. Mr. Adam Tony, you'll be up first.
Definitely. I haven't any good time. There's your distance. I don't need it. First of all, I ask you to bear with me. Lost a dear friend today. I have a few people knowing Roger Carroll, Andy Manford, Field Ditch, everything for everybody. Got bad news. He passed away suddenly yesterday. And, uh, I made some mistakes. Bear with me. Hopefully we'll get him straightened out. First of all, I want to congratulate all of you people, and I mean it from my heart. And for Londonbrook City Council. And to take on this responsibility. Thank God you got some leaders here that knows about our city. So, uh, I, I have a story to tell. I have gentlemen here with me from Island Machinery. You need to hear their story. Uh, and we need more than three minutes. If we're out of line, not talking business, please, you wrap the gavel. We respect you. We will shut up and leave you now. So, uh, I like to tell my story, and I like to tell some of their, their story over here since they were here. Uh, first of all, I've been in business for sixty-two years. Uh, probably the oldest businessman left here in Oak Hill. And I've had the ups and downs. I'm the man that blew up, stopped tourist bowling lanes by accident, by accident, everything documented, proven. Can you get my phone cut off from me? He almost had it cut off. I'm sorry. Thanks. The, I'm sorry. I, he, he cut it off, but it didn't, didn't work. So, again, I apologize. Uh, I, I like to tell my story. My little company, I got two, two operations, and I need to explain the wholesale and the retail, how we operate to survive. And then I know about them because of their employees. About eighty or ninety, whatever the employees have out there, close to a hundred. Most of them are my customers, and I'm concerned about them. They're customers. They're a customer, but they're not a big customer. Island Machines, they contract all their Holland. So the big trucks goes there. That's all. Now the town contract people. First of all, we operate two, two businesses, and, uh, we've had to, uh, you, you people have been here for a while. You knew we were uptown here down, down Main Street here. We finally sold that building. We were, we had six hundred dollars a month rent. Brian wouldn't, he wouldn't agree to pay more rent to put a roof on it. We sold it, gave it away for forty-five thousand dollars. Jim Ayers was one of the purchasers. And, and, uh, Kevin Willis out here. We were, we had helped hit the city of Oak Hill, helped us. I had the Wolverton building, Joe McQuade, the old Homeout City Building located from, uh, the Doc Peterson owned, he owned this warehouse in space. Uh, uh, obviously shut us down on Main Street, wouldn't let us load. At nighttime, snowing, we couldn't back up that alley down there. But we found the Hex Building. Six inches of water moved out there, fixed the roof. We moved out there, and we, we've had success. Today, we operate, we operate five retail stores. We have five nice retail stores. We started with nothing down here on the corner, my brother and I. I come out of Malsia, the Holland, worked in two gas stations. I worked down at the Pure Oil Station. I'm the one, I've done one abortion. Hank Williams' Cadillac. My brother and I are in a movie. Hank's Last Trip. Y'all seen it. My brother had the car in the movie down here, and his, his barn, barn out down there. Here's the last car made in a movie. But you don't want to hear all that, all that history. But I've been here since sixty-two. Lee Fraser signed my note down here. I had nothing. Got in the bowling business. The bowling alley burnt down. The former mayor of Oak Hill bought it to stop, collected the insurance, paid nobody. I lost my home. I bought the home twice on Ole Avenue, moved central, documented. But anyway, I had a work ethic. Lee Fraser knew it. Bob Thomas of T V station knew it. They kept me in the bowling business. Mr. Thomas gave me a little piece of that operation. I went out there and opened it, walled around them. Former mayor owned, where I go planes. I helped them get to all the, the that I had the books. I did a term paper in college. I helped all of them in Oak Hill, built the first bowling alleys. I was involved in every bowling alley. Walter Brown wanted my son to have them. He was getting old. He wanted my son to have the bowling alley. He, he left in the bowling alley out there, T V lanes when I was at the legislature. I spent sixteen years in the legislature. My wife and my son ran it when I was gone. Walter said, y'all, you, you come, you, you and your wife will sign a note. I want your son to have it. Charlie moved down there. What, what, but a few months, every league, T V lanes moved to white, so Charlie Tony, he made it all, paid the notes off at Diane's Bank in five years. So that's a little history. You need to know where, where we come from. He operated down there. He made money. So our tire business now, he had to come and help me. My brother and I were some partners. We split up, and I went to Beckley, got a store over there, started growing. And so to, today we have, as I said, five large stores. We have number two, our store in the state of West Virginia in Somersville. We just built a new, uh, eight hundred thousand dollar store on Hartman Road. We borrowed the money from, where Diane has to go here. We borrowed the bank, money per bank. We bought all this money over the years, paid off Somersville, don't know, paid off Oak Hill, but we own our store in Hurricane. We, we got eight hundred thousand dollars. It, it's the cost overrun, had to keep borrowing money. We never missed a payment. She's sitting there, and if I'm, when I'm gone, if I'm if I'm lying, she'll sway me. I'll just, God's been good to us. We've survived. We have a hundred and twenty-seven employees. We're down to eighty. Thank to date, no, my granddaughter told me about eighty-one. We could use a few more employees. We'd be very fine. People just won't work today. And we operate two, I'll, I'll shut up, and I'll tell you our problems. We operate two companies. We operate five retail stores. And I operate the wholesale company. I'm going all over the county. I operate, I, I deliver tires, forty-five counties. I deliver to, to, I got eighty percent of the Department of Highway statewide, but I go to their district office. I don't go to every county. They got ten district offices. Our county's certain, Pitt County's served out. Uh, Lewisburg. I haul the tires in Lewisburg. They don't haul them back. Oak Hill, they're within four hundred yards of my warehouse, but they take, they come around by one tire, but they came by eight or, eight or, eight or twelve, so. But to operate our detailed stories, we, we run a wholesale company. My son has to buy volume to get the best price. You business people understand volume. The more you buy, the better price. We beat Walmart. Nobody beats Charlie Tony's price. We all work for less. My truck is two thousand twelve model. I live a four avenue little corner, built a four room house, put in train house, I bought twice, finally break it, put some, put some cement porches. I don't live in Thousand Oaks, South Hills. You know, I drive a truck, two thousand and twelve model. I got fourteen delivery trucks. Please come and look at it. And then we got four late models, eight, eight, eight old trucks, two broke down. We're, we're getting motors put in. We buy a truck. We buy these rental trucks, hundred thousand miles. Twelve, fourteen thousand dollars, running about fifty thousand, put a motor and transmission, drive them two hundred thousand more. Documented, anybody look, come and look and see, three, three hundred thousand. We, we repair them and, and keep running them. So we have to buy, we have to sell at wholesale, and I have to compete against the big boys. Our prices are low. We operate on seven percent. So anybody, any figures? We lose money operating wholesale. Running all over the county, places, gas lane. But it enables my son, we couldn't sell that many tires. He orders five, five trailer looks tires, fifteen hundred tires at the time. We couldn't sell them all in the retail stores, enable in a must time to take and buy at the lowest level. We wouldn't, we wouldn't qualify at the lowest level. That gives us the advantage in resale. So our B and O tax, we, we take it, we, we, we that we pay on wholesale. It's not much, but it, it is still, it's still sizable sum. My truckers in my wholesale accounts, they can go to prosperity over here. Y'all, y'all have figures to check it. There is no tax in prosperity. There's no tax that we, we pay down in Hurricane. We're on the outskirts. We're within sight of city limits to Hurricane. We're on the outskirts, there at the lake. City Park Lake is not in the city down there. We don't pay no tax down there. We pay lower rates in Somersfield than we do here. Uh, but people around here, these, these truckers, uh, wholesale, like Richard Bailey down here in Dustin. We got a large, we're the only place in Pitt County you can get it, that you can get a truck car fixed. His fire departments and all fire departments can't get a tire repaired, fixed nowhere. It's Pitt County, but Seattle, Tony. You can't get a tractor tire fixed nowhere in Pitt County, a farm tractor tire. Walmart don't repair tires. They won't repair your lawnmower tire. They won't repair your four, A T V, your four wheeler tires. We, we're the only one that check the county out. Our county, our county dies, you know? So I'm hoping that you'll take a look at our situation. You know, on the tax structure that you all are, that you all are talking about. I'd like to show you something here about our state revenue. The first two months of the fiscal year. I'm gonna give this gentleman here. You keep it, y'all look there later. First two months of West Virginia's fiscal year this year, right there, I'll tell you, below, below projections. Fiscal years, y'all, like you all start July and August. First two months, below, below below estimates. First two months, the governor's bragged about, you know, the surplus. Just let me tell one story about surplus real fast. You come down out the store, and you bought a tire that was cheap, old pickup truck tire, four years ago was a hundred dollars. Today, that tire is a hundred and fifty dollars. The new pickups for the last six years, anything last six years, the name brand good tires was a hundred and fifty. They now are two hundred dollars. A police lesson is this one. If you've been in a store four years ago, you got an old model pickup, and you bought a tire, a hundred dollars, you pay six, six, six percent tax, you paid a hundred and six dollars. You bought four tires. So you, you paid four hundred and twenty-four, four hundred for the tires, six dollars each tire, you, you paid twenty-four dollars. Today, the cheap tire, you found it's one fifty. You pay one hundred dollars, you pay six dollars on the one hundred dollars, and you pay three dollars fifty cents on the, on on the three dollars, the nine, the, the the hundred and fifty dollar tires. Now, you pay nine dollars tax. Four nine is thirty-six, post twenty-four. How many tires from West Virginia sold today? Just one tire or four tires? People that used to buy four, the old, poor folks, they wanted two, now they buy one tire a month. You, you, you have pure mathematician. You understand mathematics. Look at all the other sales just one day statewide. How much more tax, I mean, they are collecting because of this Biden Biden economics that we're all, they're all living under. So you can see what the state, we're doing less money, doing less business. They are getting more tax. But that's doing less, doing less, less business. I'm sure y'all can figure that out real easy. An automobile. Now, a pickup truck is five thousand, ten thousand dollars more than it was four years ago. On that five thousand or ten thousand, particularly extra tax that they are now collecting. On that extra, not, not the forty-five thousand, it takes fifty-five thousand out of by one. So I, I, I can tell all kind of stories, and I can't take a good tire because I won't, I won't take and talk about Ohio, not, not, used to be Ohio brass. Now it's, it's Highland Machinery. I, I, I never talked to Bill McClanahan until last week. I invited him to a meeting. That's annoying, but I've been hearing about his employees talking. About him maybe, maybe going to leave. Uh, maybe have to transfer, maybe have to transfer to Beckley or somewhere else that, that they've looked at, and they have, they have some facts and figures, you know, to back it up. Uh, so that those, those employees, they're my customers, you know? Anybody come and invite you to come, and I'll tell you what he's, what he's spent with me the last, last few years, because of a regular customer, but it's a small amount. I'm speaking for his employees, our, it was in here in, at our town and our surrounding towns around here. I don't, I don't want them going to Beckley. They may, there's too many tire stores. There's two Walmarts over, over there. We don't, I don't even have one Walmart to contend with. Walmart and somebody will go in and sell tires. So, uh, Walmart has one tire change for a day, one. I've got, I've got five out here, and I need more. So Lake, Raleigh County has, has offered them, everything's documented, a fifty, a fifty percent tax break for ten years on their tax in Raleigh County. He's already over there. I, I heard about it before I ever met him. He's got a building down in Mab Scott, so everything I'm telling you, if I'm thinking something's wrong, contact me now or tell me later that I've misrepresented. I think I'm not sure of you that I'm here to help our town. I love this town. Y'all know that. I donate. I donate more money, my son, than anybody. They put us in the Hall of Fame, not for good athletes, because we donate to that school more than anybody. Teachers will tell you, they put us both in the Hall of Fame. We donate money. That's why they put us in the Hall of Fame. But I don't want to see them, these boys going, you know, when that Raleigh County has offered them this tax rate. He'd like to stay here. They've got a shop outside of Oak Hill, out your, out between Lock Alley and Summerly, out turn the woods. Mrs. Ward Roger Carroll was working hauling gravel yesterday morning when he went home to eat. He didn't hold enough blood, and he died on his kitchen floor yesterday morning. My friend and a lot of your all's friends. So I just, I'm, I'm speaking on their department. Um, his vice president has a, a copy of a couple pass outs, that y'all's permission. I'd like to pass them out. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, do I have permission to let him pass out to?
Yes.
Thanks. He's gonna speak next.
They, they, uh, their accountant, their accountant also has discovered that, that they are, that they are classified wrong here, wrong here in the, in the city of Oak Hill. They're under a different classification, and I understand that the accountant has, uh, notified probably the city manager here in town. He was, he was counselled about, about their, their, their problem. Uh, Mayor, manage, manager, do you have, do you have any correspondence for them?
Not.
In what?
I have not.
You have not?
No. Unless our B and O tax clerk received it, and she just hasn't brought it to me yet.
Okay. Hey, Bill. Would you walk to the city manager tonight before you, before you leave here? Bill McClanahan here. He's president of Island Machinery. He has his vice president with him here. So, uh, he'll, he'll get that, he'll get that.
He's not actually speak once you conclude.
What?
He's going to actually come up and talk once you, once you finish.
Well, he, he just, he's just here to answer some questions. If you have any questions, you know, uh, if you have some questions, go ahead and answer, go ahead and, and ask him now, please.
You want to come up, you're on the list.
Come on up here, Bill. You could.
Excuse me. Thank everyone for having us here and speaking with us. I'm gonna keep mine short. Our C P A, they're supposed to be contacting, uh, the city council here to change their status from, uh, wholesaler to, uh, O E M. Now, we was selling a lot of parts here in Oak Hill at the plant we got here, and we bought a place in Beckley. We moved all that over to Beckley, so we don't sell nothing. Little parts, nothing like that out of here now. What we're doing in Oak Hill now is just manufacturing new equipment. We, uh, we manufacture equipment throughout the world. It's, uh, mining equipment, but it's not just necessarily coal mining equipment. Salt mines, potash, soda ash. We ship stuff into Canada, Mexico, uh, China, India, Australia, all around the world. With the same type of equipment, very little changes. Anyhow, um, two things I want to talk about to the council tonight is one, the status on the, uh, when we changed the O M. The second one is, uh, uh, I will have to be contacting the, uh, the county. Well, the county taxes we're paying, personal taxes, if I told you how much I was paying in personal taxes in Pitt County, you'd probably have heart attacks, I'll tell you. But anyway, we have been offered a deal in Raleigh County. The next ten years, they will The next ten years, there will be a fifty percent off the personal tax, personal property taxes. And to me, that's a big pile of money. We are planning on building, the building. Here in Oak Hill would be the best place for it to do it, we'd have to get, be able to work with the county on the tax situation on that. Cause we already have manufacturing here, and what we'd like to build would be a fabrication shop going along with the manufacturing, because. We're growing too fast and we need to keep expanding. And, but I either do that here or in, or in Beckley, depending on which one I get the best deal with on personal property taxes. Cause like I said, it's such a large number. But. We're growing, we need to add, we need to take care of our communities, but we also need to keep all the dollars in the company we can. To keep growing the business. Right now, we've got seventy-five employees here. And I'd like for a bill hundred and fifty employees. That's nice, Bill, so if anybody's got any questions. I'll get how you want.
Thank you, sir. Next we have Paula McGutten from the Health Department.
He passed out a sheet for Fayette County and said, what do you think here? Which taxes are you paying? Two, you have two seats, two copies, left to see it.
Okay, um, my name is Paula McGutten. I'm a PRSS with the Fayette County Health Department. I came here tonight just to ask for support and, um. To see, we were, we were gifted, um, they're called vending machines, um, but it's more like a newspaper box. We, our plan was to put naloxone in the boxes, put resources in the boxes. I work with substance use disorder a lot and I'm in recovery. I run the harm reduction program. We do a lot with like linkage to care, FC treatment, testing, things like that. So, um, but I did want to ask for your approval. We have a board. You know, we wanted to ask before we tried to place it in the city, just to get your support. It's something that I would oversee and as a health department or our quick response team would help to oversee, um, maintaining it. We just, we have the box. I just wanted to get support to put it in the community. We will manage it, upkeep, um. Put resources in it, hopefully to help connect people to treatment. I kind of, this is kind of what it looks like. I printed out a picture. There's also a QR code on the side. If they're not trained in naloxone, they can scan this and get trained. Right? But it's not a requirement. It is the first FDA approved over the counter medicine for reversal. But we also plan to put resources and other things in the box. Kind of like you've seen the boxes and stuff, we might put non-perishable food items, we might put resources, things like that. But we just wanted to seek support or approval from you guys.
You have a location address?
Um, I had a couple. I've spoken with a couple of the gas stations. We thought about the hospital. I haven't reached out, um, but I know Oak Hill's home. And I know that we have been hit hard and it's getting better and, you know, people are getting help, but, um. I just want to be that for the community and I want to help in any way we can. And as, as a health department, we want to keep people safe and alive and we care about our community. So, um, I'm open to suggestions and I would just to get y'all support or if you have ideas, that's great. But, um, I just wanted to get approval and support first.
We'll give, uh, they'll give you guys a time to think about, and then we can address it again when the next council meeting. We can get this vision ending.
Okay, thank you.
Next we have Michelle Lazer with Willing for Hope.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much for letting me speak for a few minutes. So I know I've addressed and, and came and spoke with you all about our big event coming up at Ace Adventure Resort. Willing for Hope. This year we are co-hosted by Four Fest Events, which is a national organization. So this is the first time that Four Fest Events has been in the state of West Virginia. They do Michigan, they do Oregon, they do several states, but this is the first time they've hit West Virginia. And they did say because of Willing for Hope and they're all about, you know, the mission and mental health and, um, for the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. So our first stage was August ninth through the eleventh. It was called, they're encompassing, it's called Hill Fest, Four Fest. The first stage was August ninth through the eleventh at Snowshoe Resort. And it yielded three million dollars in revenue for the local area as well as almost two thousand people. Um, and the second stage is at Ace Adventure Resort here in Oak Hill. It happens September twenty-seventh through the twenty-ninth. Um, we're super excited about this event. It's going to be much larger than last year. Um, we have a lot of different support and companies and corporations and people that are coming in from states. So we will be, we'll be representing for many, 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 many states. Large corporations and Chaos Motorsports and Jeep and media coverage from all over West Virginia. Um, and they've already been running, you know, social media ads through Facebook and TikTok and, and all that. You'll see advertisements that'll pop up if it's something that, you know, your algorithm tells that you're interested in. But, um, what we're doing this year for the event, um, in short, and the one thing that I wanted to make sure that we were all squared away here with is the Cruisin'. Friday night of town where the, um, roads will be shut down and the Cruisin' is from five to eight. So what we'll do is at Ace Adventure from twelve to, um, eight is registration, pre-registration for pampers and stuff. And people to start buying their tickets for Saturday and Sunday. So we're gonna convoy from four-thirty from Ace Adventure Park to town. So I'm not sure what time exactly everything will get closed down and we can get our vendors in and get set up.
It'll be right around four. We have to allow the school buses to.
Buses, that's right. Okay, buses, okay. So, so we, someone will be here at four, just before four, assist, help, do whatever we need to do. And be setting up tents and hanging banners and things like that. Then we'll convoy from Ace from four-thirty until five, so I probably am going to need. Police assistance for, uh, all that traffic to come through from Ace. Contestants and registrants will be there on Friday, um, you know, but they'll be coming in and getting set up. So I'll, I guess collaborate with you on that to get us out safely and into traffic. And then we'll park all along, uh, the streets. We welcome, it's a free event. We welcome all citizens and, and everybody to come and whatever, um, places we have left after we've parked event vehicles. Park your vehicle, park your side-by-side, park your, your off-road vehicle, your antique car, your antique truck. It's a free event. We offer you to come in and park for the Cruisin' until we get all those spots, um, you know, filled up and everything. And then we're gonna have a band, a DJ between five and eight. And then also we're doing barbecue and some, um, fair festival foods, just a handful of vendors. And basically it's just to let the city of Oak Hill know what's going to be happening at Ace Adventure Resort if they haven't heard. For Saturday and Sunday and then of course it's give, you know, everybody something to do. And this is gonna be a fantastic time for all of these people that are coming in from out of state that will be coming in on Friday. Because they're traveling so far to get a break real quick again. So, yeah, this is our time to, you know, show out and show them what Oak Hill has and how beautiful the little city and how, how kind of citizens that we have. Um, so with that being said, then on Saturday, we will do, um, from nine until dark, we have, um. Offering, offering challenges. It's open to all off-road vehicles, side-by-sides, motorcycles, four-wheelers, whatever you want to bring. Fifteen hundred acres of new established trails just for Willing for Hope. As well as we had a gentleman, um, along with the owner of Four Fest Events, who develops courses for the Department of Defense. And they got together and they developed us a multi-acre obstacle course. With some amazing challenges. We'll be doing time trials on and ravine finds and things. So there will be spectator areas that will be tickets sold, the Jeep Babes of West Virginia. Um, we have about six Jeeps, uh, for representing the Jeep Babes of West Virginia, which is the volunteer that group that runs the Willing for Hope. If you do not have an off-road vehicle, if you want to get out on the obstacle course or on the trails. Those five Jeeps on the hour, we'll be doing front runs. So we will load up the Jeeps and we'll be taking you through the obstacle course and a small portion of the trails. So you can get a taste of what it's like and maybe get out in the office, sort of vehicle. Um, and then of course that night we have, um, bands, food vendors, merchandise vendors. We have a lot of auction at six o'clock. We also have speakers. We have a couple senators, um, they're coming and speaking along with that, and we're just Four Fest and myself. So we'll have, and then of course all weekend long, we have a huge counseling area because the mission of this whole event. Is to bring awareness for the American Foundation of Suicide Prevention, um, for suicide laws and living off. And also to spread the word about nine eight eight, you know, USA Prevention Hotline for everyone to text and call. So, you know, without losing sight of our mission, this is for a fantastic, wonderful cause. It's gonna be, it's gonna be exciting. Lots, lots going on. Sunday, um, we have, um. Uh, some vendors that are gonna be lingering on Sunday. We'll do it from nine to five. And we'll have a car show and shine and also an offering, side-by-side show and shine, registrations at twelve, trophies and prizes are at four. So I've got my question asked about the buses. We can come up before, make sure we can help out with everything closing down. I'll get with him on security and also security for Saturday nights, what you guys provided last year. And so, um. Any questions or anything that I need to know or need to do or, or I gave everybody a little bit of information on it so that you have it. You can go online to the website to look it all up. I was still getting squared away with, uh, fire products. And I've already talked to counselors. We'll have school counselors from two different counties there. Um, the Fayette County Sheriff Department's gonna be there with floppy ear dogs. So the kids come over to pet the dogs and see the bubble machine. Um, the police officers will be able to read the children's AFSP book to them. Um, and then the counselors will have an opportunity to ask parents what they need or if their children are doing well. Okay, that's it?
Thank you.
Yeah, or maybe.
Are you gonna make it bigger? Okay, I wanna see this. Last year was amazing.
Last year was baby to this. You, you, watch, I know you'll be there.
Oh, absolutely. Mr. Harris.
Good evenings. Uh, just a couple of things I want to address. One is the. Word around is that you just want to raise BNO taxes. I don't think the business owners should have to pay. For mistakes the cities have made. I mean, instead of buying new vehicles, we can go to some of these auctions and buy state vehicles. That are maintained well. I mean. That's just one thing. And I've also talked to Mike a couple of times. We got a problem with bikes, motorbikes and electric bikes riding up and down sidewalks. Every morning I go to work, there's ten, twelve, older ladies walk up and down the street for their exercise. And these bikes and mini bikes, especially the mini bike, I mean. They're riding down the sidewalk. Something needs to be done before somebody gets hurt. That's all.
Mr. Harris. Cindy Whitlock?
Sir?
Was he wanting to put the nine eight eight? We have one that's stored in my building.
I didn't bring one of these for everybody. I'm gonna just set this up here.
I put it on the window outside.
Thank you.
We got all those episodes of people at Oak Hill Festival, but thank you.
Please. What, what's in the packet are some pictures of, um, various and sundry schemes I've been involved in. Breast cancer awareness. What New River Health is doing this year, we're gonna, um. Our event for October is called Paint the Town Pink. We're trying to get all five towns that we, uh, serve the, the folks in. Uh, to support a big endeavor to make sure that women plan their mammograms in October. We have a several events on the first page that you'll see. Um, one of those is to hang the, um, pink scarf, the longest pink scarf in the world, which was initiated here. In Oak Hill, that's part of it laying right there. Ten thousand feet of that is stored in Dana Tredway's garage. We put it up at Tammerack for several years. We put it up in Illinois. Uh, we put it up on, uh, floats for the Oak Hill Festival parades. Uh, we've sent it to several places to be on display. The, uh, West Virginia Water Company displayed it in Charleston. Um, so we're gonna try to display it, um, and give it its due honor due, um, at our new place in Oak Hill. We'll also have, um, a tree there, such much like the hospice tree, it definitely is the hospice tree. That we're gonna dedicate to those we have lost and those who are battling breast cancer. We'll have a five K walk run and I hope Mike will save us from getting killed and run over out at our place when we do a five K upstairs. It's pretty dangerous sometimes, but Act of Southern West Virginia has laid out a five K, um. Run, walk that we're gonna do out there and that will be on Sunday afternoon, the, um, thirteenth of October. And we are gonna try to get a car show of pink vehicles out there. I just know, um. Mr. Willis has a tow truck with a pink ribbon on it and I've seen some in the state. And hopefully we'll get that to grow over the years. Um, we'll do lunch and learns every Wednesday. We'll have education and a bag lunch. Um, we're gonna have our light poles out there. We'll have kind of similar to what you've done with the veterans, only those will be pink ribbons. Um, out at our place. Um, rewards for those who get mammograms. Our employees have designed, um. Breast cancer T-shirts and we will be giving, having staff contests to see how many people that we can get out to get their mammograms. For the towns, what we're offering is a, um, a banner for your street. We will pay for it if you want it. We are offering posters for the merchants, which will have information about, um. How to get a mammogram and if they want part of the scarf on display in their stores, we can make a little roll of that for them as well. We will have the yard signs that you stick in the ground. We will make sure that the city has those. And then the tat, and we will frame a proclamation for the mayor or city council to sign each of our towns. The idea being that we take this scarf, which represents people from all over the country. All over West Virginia and tie them together through our five towns, through the county into this scarf. Because of the common thread, the unfortunate common thread of, of breast cancer. And if there are anything else that you would like to do in support of this, um, let me know. We will have, you know, one of, it's one of the things somebody mentioned was putting mammogram reminders in bills. Recognizing thrivers in your towns, help promote the events that other people are doing. I'm sure Plateau Medical will be involved as well. Um, my committee is, consists of Roseanne Michaels, who is a survivor, Vicki Gay. Linda Pettit, who is a survivor and several media representatives. My partners include ZMM, which has built the schools and which built our beautiful place out, um. From Kmart into a remarkable health center, Alloy Credit, West Virginia Water, Fayette County Health Department and Act of Southern West Virginia. The pictures that you have here are the pictures of the scarf and its growth over the years, especially this, this paper here. Um, when Terry Massey passed away, October twenty-ninth, two thousand and nine, which is fifteen years ago this October. Started Terry's tribute with two intentions. One was to raise money for scholarships for kids who'd lost the parent's breast cancer. Um, we have succeeded in delivering seven scholarships to date. And number two was to come up with an extraordinary way to raise awareness about breast cancer. And what we landed on was the scarf. So people from all over the country, when they saw it at Tammerack, when they saw it locally. The first time we got together, Kay Best is the one who figured out how big, how wide, the, the details. We laid it out on a table. It was forty-two feet long. The second time we pulled it together, we put it up at the Lewis Center. It was five hundred feet. Um, it was over a thousand feet the first time we put it on the fence at Oak Hill High School for the annual cancer walk. So over the years and over time, um, it has grown and then, and then of course, like anything else, um. The years pass and, and, um, the, the mourning and the grieving, kind of the sharp edges kind of, um. Maybe, um, don't, aren't so rough as they were. But then this year we lost a young lady, um, a young woman, a very talented young woman, who was the art teacher at Oak Hill High School, Jan Skoloff. She left behind a son who we have taken care of. He's an adult in college. Uh, Jan was a fabulous outdoors person, a fabulous supporter of recreation. And a very talented artist and an excellent teacher. So when she passed this spring and I crossed paths with other friends with the same challenge that we lived through. Um, it kind of, again, friends came together and that's, that's one of the reasons. and that's, that's one of the reasons we're having the race too. So I just am asking, we make, New River Health makes no money on mammograms because we do not actually execute them. But we are in the, in the business to refer women for those and keep after them to make sure that they are done on a regular basis, make sure they find places to get those done. So it is not any kind of a promotion for, for us to make money. Of course, we appreciate the support of Oak Hill at our new location. We are in Somersville, Smithers, Sophia, we have a dental office at Lookout, and we have pharmacy in Fayetteville. So we're gonna ask all of those towns to get involved in this and tie this breast cancer thread together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Take my yarn and go home.
Up next, we have the recognition of Tyler Bragg, our GIS coordinator. On receiving of a national award. And there he is on the screen. We really appreciate you, ma'am. You really do need any words?
Woo!
No, no, I don't think I'm gonna cry. No, I do just wanna say just a couple things. This truly, really, our, this award for the city of Oak Hill truly is a team effort. While I'm the only GIS-specific dedicated staff member, all of our staff members participate in our GIS program through the various different applications that we have, and it truly wouldn't succeed if they didn't use it. It doesn't matter how many applications I build, if nobody uses them, it's, it's no good for anything. So it was an honor to go out to San Diego and receive the award from the president of the company, Esri, which is the world's leading GIS software company. And so thank you for sending me out there to enjoy San Diego for a couple of days. That was, that was a good experience. And to put it in a little bit of perspective, 'cause this was a little bit of a shock, the statistic to me, just the sheer numbers. In his Jack Dangerman speech at the award ceremony, he cited that they have a total of about over six hundred thousand organizations that are members that subscribe to Esri that use their software throughout the world. And so out of those six hundred thousand, this year's award recipients numbered about two hundred and eighty of six hundred thousand organizations, and of those two hundred and eighty, about half of those were international awards. So that we stood out, the city of Oak Hill stood out in the top one hundred and forty of all the organizations in the United States. So I think that reflects very highly us, especially as a very small municipality. Very progressive in what we're doing.
Thank you, Tyler, congratulations. All right, we're now move into unfinished business. Number one. Public hearing on bond ordinance authorizing the acquisition and construction of certain additions, betterments, and improvements to the existing public sewerage facilities at the city of Oak Hill, and the financing of the cost not otherwise provided. Therefore, through the issuance by the city of Oak Hill and not more than four million nine hundred forty-nine thousand dollars in aggregate principal amount of the city of Oak Hill Sewer Revenue Bonds into series. The first series to be designated Sewer Revenue Bonds Series Twenty Twenty Four A, that's part of the West Virginia SRF program, and second to be designated Sewer Revenue Bonds Series Twenty Twenty Four B, also a part of the West Virginia SRF program, providing for the rights and remedies of and security for the holders of such bonds, authorizing execution and delivery of all documents relating to the issuance of such bonds, approving, ratifying, and confirming bond purchase agreements with the West Virginia Water Development Authority and the West Virginia Department of Environmental Protection relating to such Series Twenty Twenty Four A bonds and Series Twenty Twenty Four B bonds, authorizing the sale and providing for the terms and provisions of such bonds and adopting other provisions related thereto. Now we'll open our public hearing. All right, Mr. Harris, you're gonna have to give me your pronunciation, yeah, her name is Cory.
Cory, yes. Bonanza. Yeah, so now the public hearing is open. If there's anyone from the public that would like to speak, this, this is their opportunity. If there are no members of the public who would like to speak, then you can go ahead and close the public hearing, and we can move on to a motion to approve the ordinance.
We will close the public hearing. Make the motions. Which will be the final action following such public hearing to give final approval in the issuance of bonds as described in one above and to put the bond ordinance into effect.
And being in motion. I motion this quick to give the final approval for the issuance of the bond for the sewer project as described in item one.
I second that.
All right. Proper motion and second. All those in favor? Any further questions? All opposed? So move. To number three, consideration of final action on supplemental resolution supplementing and amending the bond ordinance described in number one above relating to the bonds. This is a supplemental resolution providing as to principal amounts, dates, maturity dates, interest rates, principal payment dates, redemption provisions, sale prices, and other terms of the Sewer Revenue Bonds Series Twenty Twenty Four A and the Sewer Revenue Bonds Series Twenty Twenty Four B, all part of the SRF program at the city of Oak Hill, ratifying and approving bond purchase agreements relating to such bonds and the sale and delivery of such bonds to the West Virginia Water Development Authority, designating eight bonds, registrar, depository bank, and paying agent, and making other provisions as to the bonds. Once again, we need the public hearing again for this part.
No, this one you can simply request for a motion to approve the.
Request for a motion.
I move to approve the supplemental resolutions supplementing and amending the bond ordinance described in one A above.
Second that. Motion second, all those in favor? All opposed? Motion so appears. At this time, we will be taking a recess.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I could interject, there was one final agenda item on number four. It was actually a resolution to authorize and approve the requisition, the first requisition that would occur upon closing of the bonds. That separate apart from the supplemental, I told you wrong at the beginning of the movie. But that one needed to be just a motion to approve and authorize the requisition, first requisition of the bond process.
Will I explain that again?
Sure. A motion to approve and authorize the first requisition of the bond process.
I make a motion to approve the final resolution.
First requisition of the requisition. Sorry.
I think quite here all, trying to get there.
All right, we have your motion and a second. Any other questions? All in favor? All opposed? Motion is carried. All right, well now we'll move into our recess here. All right, thank you. I'll work through control. Community group.
Welcome back, folks. We now call back the City Council meeting here September ninth, two thousand twenty-nine. We are going to skip ahead on our agenda briefly. Sam with Franchers here, we're gonna jump into number nine and number ten, City Park authorized park rights resolution, handing Francher's favor of approval.
Good evening, everyone. A couple, I know we have some new council members, maybe since the last time I've been up here, so I'll just quickly introduce myself. I am Sam Ridge, I'm a project manager with the Fractor Group, who was selected as the architect engineering firm for the Oak Hill City Park Innovations Project. We worked at the city on getting phase one out the bid, which is scheduled to be completed this month. We also, I was in front of you all several months ago, where we talked about this land and water conservation fund grant, and I sat here and pessimistically told you how difficult it is to get these grants and how competitive they are. And here we are several months later, and the city has been awarded a total grant project of four hundred thousand dollars. Fifty percent of that is city matching funds, which you all committed to the budget, two hundred thousand dollars. And the other two hundred thousand comes from the Department of Interior, National Park Service, and is administered through the state's development office. The overall summary of what this project is, is it's going to make inclusive playground upgrades at City Park, so add some accessible playground equipment, board in place rubber surfacing, and add some accessible pathways to get to that equipment, as well as resurface the entirety of the existing playground area with new pre-engineered wood fiber mulch, as well as some stormwater improvements. This will also include a shade cell canopy with some picnic tables and other site furnishings, as well as some benches, tables, that some of the benches will have their own standalone canopies. So it's adding some much needed shade down at the park, which the community has been pretty vocal about wanting. Really, the first item that is on the agenda here is the resolution that is in front of you. This is required to basically move forward with the grant. So, Dmitri, I don't know if you have anything to add to that, as far as this first item here?
I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second that.
Revolution in a second. Any further questions? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries? Thank you.
So, the item number ten on the agenda is approval of our agreement. So this is a new AIE service order that I presented the city with, that is for our fees associated with the next phase of this particular grant project. The total lump sum amount is thirty-five thousand dollars. This is included in that four hundred thousand dollar total project budget. This is not an addition to. So that was built into the application and submitted, you know, when we applied for this grant. So this is one of the budget items, and just the formality of our agreement, so that we can assist with future design. We'll be helping with bidding. There'll be a couple different contracts on this. We're gonna move forward with purchasing the playground equipment through a vendor, through a cooperative purchasing agreement, and then we're also gonna have a general contract that will be bid out for some of the other improvements that will need to be made. So we'll provide all the design, bidding, construction administration, inspection services associated with the contract from start.
Motion that we approved.
I second it. Any more questions? Revolution in a second. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you. Quick question, if I may. Is there anything in that park that can be recycled? Equipment wise?
We're only removing, if you look on the screen there, right below those two little green dots, at part of this grant project, we're only removing a small piece of equipment there. The rest of the equipment is not being removed as part of this project. We have applied for congressional directed spending requests, which were not, we had, like I'm the city, but the city of Oak Hill is on the initial recommendation from the senator's office. So as long as everything goes well, and gets passed in the budget, likely in January, there'll be an additional one point eight million dollars coming to this project. So that next phase would include a complete replacement of all that equipment. As far as things that you can reuse, recycle, benches, tables, absolutely. It's very frowned upon to recycle the playground equipment because of liability and insurance reasons. And it's also very hard to take it apart and put it back together. So just a word of caution, that's, most people don't like to do it for that reason a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, good evening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Sam.
I'll still go back to unfinished business. Number six now, our planning commission, recommendation to add non-automotive sales lot to zoning definition. This will be the second reading.
We had this last month on the first reading, and it's just to add a sales lot, bigger items, but it's part of the unit equipment. Add that into our definitions. Speed reading, and that's true.
I'll make that motion on the funding commission recommendations.
I'll second that.
Revolution in a second. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion is carried to adopt the commission's recommendation to add non-automotive sales lots to zoning definition. Number seven, our vacant building registration fees.
This is a continuation of our discussion from last month. We have the vacant building fees, the current vacant building fees in there, and then Terry and PJ made a recommendation on how to amend those fees. That's the other session, and I have published ready, but they're not just. That's what they currently are. So this is, well.
Hold on, that's like the third page.
And this is also recommending a sixty day time period, that only sixty days has to pass. The property is made sixty days.
Whereas the first one, one hundred and eighty days.
It started out at forty-five.
Well, it was changed. Actually, it changed all the way up to a hundred and eighty. And then with no fees. So I have actually looked through other municipalities, and they're all at sixty, and one is at forty, one is at ninety. So I figured that sixty would be ours, and the registration fee, all of them charged.
So if you, if you have a vacant structure, it's been vacant, let's say seventy days, and you register for the two hundred dollars, and then you rent it, do you get a pro-rated refund on that two hundred dollar?
You wouldn't on the registration fee, no. But you wouldn't be, you wouldn't fall into the four hundred dollar fee.
Right. So, so if you're, if you have a vacant structure for sixty-one days, you've gotta pay two hundred. Right. So, so if you, if you have a vacant structure for sixty-one days, you've got to pay two hundred.
It has that, the fee may be refunded prorated only for the current year during the six months following registration anniversary, if all the following apply. Well, it's the same, it's the same as it is now.
Yeah, it's the same wording as what is in there, in there now. The only thing we've done was put a registration fee into it. And we've raised our fees. We've raised our fees. Couple of the municipalities told me that if you really want to see movement, you want to dig deep. Well, at first, that's where I was at. I mean, I was digging real deep. But then I thought, man, you know, we're in a smaller town than what some of these are that are digging real deep, and to sit down and try to do something like that. So I kind of just bumped everything four hundred dollar increments, is what I did.
So is this all structures or just commercial or commercial and residential or all?
The wording that we had in the last ordinance was residential or. I didn't want to separate it. I just left it the way that it was.
Well, and I think it's, you're walking a fine line of being too strict or not strict enough. That's where we're at. But I know, you know, you can take our main street, and I know that there's vacant structures that have been vacant for a long time with no urgency whatsoever to repurpose them or renovate them or rent them. There are other structures that have been actively on the market for more than sixty days.
Well, I think that that would be something that, I don't think that if you can sit down and show that you have actively been, your place is move-in ready. If you're a move-in ready business, you have actively been trying to find, you know, an occupant. I don't feel that that would be something that we would actually have to go with with that, but it would have to be, the proof has to be there. The utilities has to be on. You know, it still falls under that certain criteria that we'd still have to follow. But I was asked that question earlier about vacant buildings that may have registered. Well, if you sit down and look at last year's income for vacant building register, we only made six thousand dollars. Sit down and broke it down to the buildings that's here, it's eighty-seven dollars a building. That's not helping us, and that's not helping them.
So part of this needs to, because the registry, the vacant building registry, had to go in along with this ordinance, how we, or we've got to come up with a way of developing a registry and an implementation if we was to pass this, an implementation process.
Well, we have, we have one, it's just not working. We don't, we have the forms we want to get out and send them, but it's, it's one Excel spreadsheet. And that's, so that's something we need to get all that, so that it gives us a reminder to send out the new, next year's notice.
And if, if you look online right now, that registry form's already on our website. Just has to have the fees updated on it too. And if you do it, most businesses, most everybody would rather do it online. Do it online, then it's an automatic, it's automatically key.
So do you, does that not need to be separated between residential and?
It is on the registry form.
I, I, I'm, I'm, that's what I'm saying is because you have buildings out there that are commercial and residential combined. Commercial part of it is empty, but the residential part of it is being occupied. So someone could theoretically have an argument that their building is occupied. Am I correct in stating that, if you just says vacant buildings?
I don't think so.
Yes. A what? Our current ordinance, yes.
By the current ordinance.
The current ordinance is very clear that if you have a residential unit or you have a tenant, a bona fide tenant in a building that also has a storefront, then that building is not deemed to be vacant according to the ordinance right now.
Which I think needs to be changed.
That's for you guys.
Well, I kind of agree with that. I mean, I do agree with that. Because if you've got renter above, say that you got renters above your, your business, that's, and I'm gonna throw this out here, and I'm probably gonna hate myself for doing it, but it'd be the same if you sat down and said, okay, you've got a vacant building. Okay? I can show you, there's probably eight, ten places here in the state, in the city of Oak Hill that is one vacant building. It's got two storefronts. So you would have to actually state that storefront instead of by vacant, vacant building. And by, just because you have a renter in the residential part, if the storefront is still open, vacant, then you still have vacant, a vacant property. I think the storefront is what you would have to have. Would that be correct, Bill?
It certainly be, it would be that way. I don't think it's living that way right now.
No, it's not.
It's a language to govern.
And maybe there is, but I, I think you're gonna have to safeguard folks that have an apartment building or, or any type of structure, and they're gonna renovate it. You know, some of those you can do in sixty days, some you cannot. So you have to safeguard against those folks, because that's what, that's what we want to promote.
Yes, that is. And if, and that's, and I, and I thought about that, and I had talked a little bit with a couple other people about that. If they're renovating, do they have a permit? Okay, if you're ready.
I mean, most of the time.
And don't get me wrong, but if you're renovating a place and you have a permit, then really not considered vacant right now, because you aren't working on it.
You know, but I could see a long-term renovation that wouldn't require permit as well. If you're gonna change the floor coverings and you gotta do a deep clean and all that, you're doing it by yourself as a property owner, I could see that taking three, four, or five months.
I mean, I, I don't know how we can get around it all, but, you know, right now, we're not doing anything.
If I may, I think that's, that's already addressed. I'm looking under the appeal rights section in our current code, and there's a waiver, waiver of registration fees. And then this also goes into how, if the owner can demonstrate with satisfactory proof to the city manager or his designee that he, she is in the process of demolition, rehabilitation, or other substantial repair of the vacant building, and objectively demonstrates to the city manager or his designee a reasonable anticipated length of time for the demolition, rehabilitation, or other substantial part of the repair of the vacant building. So I, I think we've, that's already, that's legitimate. I think it's already been considered in here.
Yeah, but I, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, if we revamp this whole thing, that needs to stay in there.
Yes, yes. Well, see, that's the reason why, really, the only thing I was wanting to do was change, he's before registration, instead of a hundred and eighty to sixty. And to just up our fees. The only other thing that I've seen that we may have to put in there would be storefronts. And separate, like Chris had pointed out, you have apartments above a storefront. Split occupancy.
And then it already, sorry, it already says too, that a one-time waiver on the registration fee for up to ninety days can be granted by the city manager. So like if they, like what you were saying, Bill, is if someone's actively, you know, they just put it on the market, they didn't get it sold within sixty days or rented sixty days, and they came to the meeting and said, you know, can we get an extension on this before we have to register? You know, that could be another ninety days, and you need to breathe under that to give them some more time too.
I also think it would be good if we had something in there that you prorate till a certain time, so all of them are coming due at the same time. Then you don't have to worry about two or keep them tickler and.
So you do that, and on, pick a date, July one, they're all due.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, start with the fiscal year.
Yeah.
Fiscal year starts January fir-, I mean, July first.
But then, so you would prorate the registration fee.
I mean, there's just something, I just think it would make it easier for implementation and.
Like that too.
If you knew that it was gonna be either July first or January first, whatever, somehow.
I figure our fiscal year starts on July one. That would probably be the start of that fiscal year for that, wouldn't it?
But, but I don't know, you would have a problem with that too, because let's say on, if it's, if it's June the fifteenth, and somebody registers a vacant structure, you prorate fifteen days of the.
I'd say so.
Yeah. I think that was actually.
Well, pick another one. And you prorate the month by in June. And that person has to pay two months out of the two hundred dollars. But then another person, a different person, that's, if, if they're here July the tenth, they're gonna have to pay nearly the whole two hundred dollars, and there's no way for them to be refunded that month. The first person, if the building became occupied, they would have paid just a few dollars. Somebody right after that would have to pay the full two hundred with no chance of refund.
Or you can make them, maybe you make them pay two hundred, and they're getting a little extra, I guess, till the next year. So if they're, if they come in March, you say, okay, give me two hundred dollars, but your next renewal won't be till June of the next, or July of the next year. So just something like that.
You could do a prorated refund of the two hundred dollars.
So what about the people that don't come to you, that has the buildings out there and it's on the main street, the storefront?
We would send them.
Let you know that my building is vacant. I'm not gonna work. What do you do there?
If we know it's vacant, then we'll send them, we'll send it out, we send them the registration and tell them. And that's another thing, you know, you have to have a way to keep up with that. You send it out, everybody.
Well, see, that's what we was talking about too. If Tyler was able to put this on a GIS, where our, Allison could be out, Ben could be out, Bill could be out. And if they happen to come across, and they pull it up, and it's not, this building is not on there, then they can pin it. Then it's gonna automatically generate what needs to go to that customer. To that, not to the customer, but to that owner, saying, okay, you failed to register. You have thirty days to register. And then if you're not registered within that thirty days, then there's a penalty behind it. You've already had thirty days. You've already, well, you've already had sixty. Now you extended it thirty more.
Sting Miller Building.
Have you ever seen the constitutionality of vacant structure? Have you ever seen a question?
I would not.
We have so many buildings, storefronts, whatever you want. Sting Miller's been a sore. Sad. In our town, there's just certain places that you drive through, and it's better than that. Often we've got, I mean, what Terry has put together and raising this piece. Somehow we gotta generate funds, and they shouldn't be allowed to sit there. I just don't.
Well, I, I think the other part of it, and Allison's touched on this too, I, I really think, however many dollars in revenue you make off this, it doesn't go towards, the dollars don't go towards improving the property. The penalty to the property owner is what incentive is. But I, you know, I, I really think that the key to it is to, not just a negative incentive, but a positive incentive too, for somebody to get a building that's move-in ready. And that's, you know, that's tough to do with your utilities. A lot of times, that's one of the key factors, utilities for the roof. And so I, I think you have to, you know, I'm, I'm not opposed to the negative incentive, but I also think we have to work hard towards a positive incentive as well to, hey, this, this is how you can make money off this building, you know? This is how you can sell it, this is how you can renovate it, these are some things we can do with the building. It's all positive, and.
Well, see, and actually, that's, I'm, I'm glad that you brought that up, because me and Allison have been talking, and what she's working with too is kind of an incentive program with some of these business owners, that if you are trying to, and she, I think she's working on grants for that right now, to where that she can do a fifty-fifty match, help you with your roof, help you with your power, restructure, whatever, that business can become operational. It's not just sitting here, this is actually an incentive to send them to her too, to help with this. It's not to sit here and see how much we can drain from them. That's not the intention of this at all. The intention of this is to see if you can reach out to Allison, or even reach out to Allison to help you to fill that structure. She may be able to get through with some of the people through the hub or anything else, and might have somebody that's already looking for that building. You know, there's, there's other ways that we can help as a city, it's not just by imposing the fine. The fine is just so that the business owner will actually sit down. Roger said this year, I mean, months ago, you're paying twelve hundred dollars a month for us paying it on your place. You can't rent it for fifteen hundred. Rent it for a thousand, you're only paying two hundred dollars a month for that, instead of paying twelve hundred dollars a month. That little bit would help you better than you paying it all yourself. And that's all we're trying to do, is just try to sit down and get the business owner to either, with Allison, help rent it, or with Allison, help it to become rentable.
We've already, we've drafted the letter already that's ready to go. As soon as, as soon as a property owner, you know, as long as it's approved, as soon as a property owner's notified of the structure, or as soon as they notify us of this structure, we've got a letter ready to go with that that says, hey, this is, we also have this economic development avenue for you. We can help you find tenants. We can go through our structural and, or our engineering analysis through Chapman. We have all these different business support programs, but you need to read, we, we have these for you to assist you in this. So like, the letter's already drafted, it's been drafted for months, ready to go, just waiting on these ordinances and everything to kind of be in lockstep with one another, so that we can present our. So that we can present our business, our building owners with a consistent uh program that we can actually follow through on transparently.
You're waiting on the grant.
No, we're not waiting on the grant approval for that.
Will we commit to assisting someone?
No way, no, well, before we commit to giving money, like we have to get money before we give money. But no, the, we already have a great relationship with the SBDC, with West Virginia Hive, with West Virginia Community Development Fund. West Virginia Housing Authority, um there are already, not through the city of Oak Hill, but through state and federal programs. There are already ways that we can help these business owners. So what they just have to do is reach out to me and then I'll play matchmaker with the resources that are already existing. Now, the grants or other potential funds that we might be able to uh to administer, to be able to help get these buildings up to the point of occupancy. That we don't have yet, that we, that's a more in-depth study, um and a much more in-depth program. Uh, so we can't, obviously we can't offer that yet, we don't have the money, or we don't have that program built out. There's a whole lot of assistance that we've already got ready and available for them, and several businesses are already in the, in the queue using it now.
So. This might kind of be off a little bit, but it kind of ties in with this also with these vacant buildings. Last month, you mentioned that there was some buildings along in town that were inhabitable. So these ones that are inhabitable, maybe with, you know, roofs falling in or something, are, are we, or do we have a. I mean, that's gonna be part of this also, because you can't, you know, if you can't move in it, you know. So are you planning on looking into with the SIB board? Get, I mean, they haven't been active in forever, but, you know, going out and grading these buildings and, you know, seeing what needs demoed and. Cause our SIB board at one time was really, really active. Was looking at those.
Now, if I understand correctly, uh Ben, with what you're into now, I don't, I don't know if, we still need to go through the structural inspection board?
And then we just have to put the magazines to have it, that they have to, I mean, that they have to demolish it.
We still have that SIB board though, right?
Right, but it, they're also on the appeal board, the structural inspection board is now the appeal. They haven't changed, not right now, it's still two, but um they're the appeal board for contractors. The ones that, if the contractors have a, a, if they, if Ben tells them to do something they don't wanna do.
That's not SIB though.
No, that's, we've named this, that we have a separate board for that, it's the appeal. But they just happen, so happen to be the same people that are on the structural inspection board. It's John Tuggle, um Danny Damron and.
Blaine Watson on that?
Blaine, yes. All the structural inspection board is uh me, the mayor, John Tuggle. And we never got Tim is on it. And we never did replace.
Josh, Josh Jen.
No, he resigned.
He never did replace him.
Yeah.
So they would review and possibly uh deal with any appeals, the decision made by me to condemn a building. It's lined out exactly in code through the IPMC, how this would go forth. That would be our structural inspection board slash. Building appeals board. I will say, I've got a chart in front of me, this uh past week, I went to. A class that went over the International Mechanical Code and the International Plumbing Code. So I've actually got a chart that is the minimum requirements for plumbing facilities. In type of inside of buildings across all the occupancies. And these are obtainable, even in some of our, not necessarily the worst dilapidated buildings, but. In several of the buildings we have around town. There are requirements for, uh let's see. Business for transfer, no, uh light industrial. One bathroom per twenty-five for the first fifty and one per fifty for the remaining exceeding fifty, so that's your occupancy load for a building. These are minimal standards, so we're talking about bathroom facilities, or maybe two bathrooms with. A sink, a stall, a urinal for the men's side, and then a sink and a stall for the female's side to meet those minimum requirements by the IBC. So when we start working on this, guys, uh let's get the ball rolling, let's find a way to help these people. Uh using the standards that minimally are needed, put these, put them in these places. That makes sense.
Well, I believe we got off course a little bit.
I think so too.
Oh, that's okay.
But I. I think that dilapidated property goes hand in hand with vacant property. You obviously can't have one without having, having both at times. And I. And the vacant property, and I, I agree with it. But that's not the worst of the worst, the worst of the worst is dilapidated structures. And I think if we're putting our emphasis on. Vacant structures right now, you're not, you're not looking at the worst of the worst, you're, you're looking at, you're gonna look at some nice structures every now and then, or. But, but I think our, our vacant, our dilapidated structures. In my opinion, is more important, so they've already tipped over the brink. And you can spot them a mile away, and they're the ones that are usually, well, I'll say always. More unsafe for your community and more detriment to your community than just a vacant structure. So I, I believe we've, we, we've boxed lid and we've gotten away from dilapidated property. And now we're going after vacant property, or, or, I, I think it needs to be reversed, yeah, that's just my opinion.
Except the dilapidated property costs money, vacant right now, that's. But we are, we have, there's another funding of the REIT grant that we can apply for. And we can start that again.
So just to throw this out here, the two actually go hand in hand. For instance, we notify a property owner about the fact that it's a vacant building. They say, well, how do I get rid of this? They call us, then we potentially can get them signed up through the inspection process to leak them as a dilapidated building. And they're removed from the vacant building responsibly, responsibility, because we're waiting to potentially tear them down. In grant funding or funding from some other source. But while we're doing one, we're also doing the other. Uh, makes sense?
Yeah, too.
Cause tha- that's how it works, guys, when we get one, five other people find out about it and. Oh wow, I don't wanna pay that vacant building here, I, I can donate my property also. Or not donate their property, but get their structures removed also, because they are dilapidated buildings that are too far out of reach of repair.
And so may actually donate it to the city.
City of Princeton has over a hundred parcels of property where that is happening.
So we don't have.
The city of Huntington.
We don't have an, yeah, we can do it through the county, but we don't have a land reuse agency as a municipality. And that's one of the things that we would be studying when it comes to options for rehabbing vacant commercial structures.
Totally thought that, throwing that out there, that is existence in Princeton.
Well, I, I think with the next round of refunding for that, we need to, because I know. We didn't utilize all the money, the last program, the last REIT program, because you're behind the eight ball in having. Dilapidated structures that exist, that weren't. Are enough along in the process, so, so we lost that money, so I think it's imperative that if we get another round of money, that we spend every penny of it.
And I agree.
We used to do it, we used to do it out of the general fund. Uh, until that REIT program, we tore every house that was torn down or structure. Was paid for out of the general fund. And we didn't do them all at once, but, but we did them on a continual basis.
That was done through the SIB board, I'm a big fan of, and I always. Because of a, there's nothing political in it, and it's all by score. It's all by judging it by a score.
There's nothing in that program that we did with SIB that will meet the REIT requirements to get that money. You have to have somebody to continue building. And it has to be somebody that's certified, like Benny is, or it has to be a mission.
And by starting the vacant building registry, buy more of your dilapidated buildings.
So do we have a listing now? We have, yes, we have some. The ones that we were.
That might be true, but we've got a whole lot more torn down.
Right, you can do, I mean, if you're not getting the money from REIT, then you can do it that way. But it's.
They have.
It's pretty easy to have Ben condemn a, a person, give you a right of entry to demolish, and that's it. I mean, because they're, they want it to be torn down too, so that works out pretty good. He has a list to go by, it's not like he can just go out and say, oh, I wanted to demolish this building. You have to prove that certain things are done. I, it would be easier for me to go and say, I want this house torn down and I excuse the. The requirements for want to have them demolished. But the point is with that, right now, your city manager is also your finance director, and I can't do, I can't take that on.
So again, if you run the vacant building registry along with dilapidated structures. You're gonna have people jumping from one to the other to take care of a building that is too far gone, like. Th- these two are meant to run tandem with each other.
I don't, I don't know that. We've got enough, um we went, brought up so many ideas, I think we kinda, I don't know if we can make any decisions on this.
I mean, they look at a point.
And.
A committee or.
To look at the ordinance and look at everything and draft up something, I think we need that.
Sorry if I steered us off.
I'll move to, to table item. Until uh some rapid issues can be done.
Just motion and a second to table vacant building registration fees, discussion and decision part of this, all those in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? Function is the period. Okay, uh down to number eight, news business, park drive at city park, parking and traffic determination.
Okay, when um the city park was paved, the area on the right-hand side there was paved. Um, some of the people that are innovative and think ahead, not like me. Thought that it might, that that would be a good place for parking. Uh, instead of having a two-way street. That it would be good to park on that side where the new paving is, and then have a one-way street coming from here. To the. Uh, the sharp, or the big curve there at the Lewis Community Center. And so that is what we're asking for, um to have this one-way, to have park drive be a one-way street. I think Tyler probably has some more, do you have anything to add to that? You can tell how many parking places you have.
No, just so you know what you're looking at, um I took this new aerial photography with our drones. So it would have all the updated paving and that the appropriate street width, um it's hard to see on the screen. But, and I, I can get anybody a print copy if you need, but there is a, a green. Polygon two, that represents a fifty-foot aisle width all the way through there. Uh, there's a lot of standards when you go looking into this, um about what you need with any forty-five degree parking, sixty-degree parking. When we had those, what is your aisle width and your minimum aisle width? Um, this is proposal, from the best I could tell, this meets all the standards with forty-five degree parking. Fifteen-foot aisle width, one-way, metal space, showing about two hundred and fifty feet spacing. Um, there is some parking on. Like this right side, which is the ball court side, and you know, a lot of this section. Ends up being about a hundred and eleven spaces, um which is, I, I don't know the exact number that there was when you factor in the parallel parking. Before, several about fifty spaces at Carlton Way was about on. I don't know the number of parallel spaces, but a lot of them hundred and one. This is, we, this is a scare drawing. Should represent pretty close to what we can achieve realistically down there. And that's in some additional ADA parking spaces, parallel, in front of basketball court as well, technology and uh parallel ADA spaces. Uh, as well as a transition of the mixed bus side.
And also, Chief Wisman um looked at some camera footage and. To see which way that people were driving most, and it was from here to um central. Even he didn't, he proved himself wrong.
Yeah, I thought it would be opposite, so I looked at two days worth of camera footage, and about ninety percent of them are going the way that we're proposing to take. I thought it would be the opposite.
We had some concerns about the parking in the REIT, about the people having to park and cross over the street. So that's why the speed bumps are in there, just to slow down traffic there so that it wouldn't be. Such a big deal to go across the street.
Tyler, we also discussed the temporary parking balusters there when you enter Carlton Way. Where it could be determined if you wanted to that road up for an event for a certain reason. But typically, under normal circumstances, that would be blocked off to vehicle traffic, because your concession stand is down. Between the two fields, which is gonna create a lot of public walking traffic.
And those are gonna, those bollards on Carlton Way that will block any particular access. Into Carlton Way, and that whole, that's horrible. Those are gonna be installed as part of the current park project, they have always been part of the project. Um, then, then you have the flexibility of whether you wanna block that off if you feel like you're not a part of these. But if you drop, get on there and look at Carlton Way with the concession stand, now you've, you've brought a high concentration of pedestrian traffic. Right beside Carlton Way, people gonna be running around getting their concessions. Um, that's always been the thought, is to just be followed up and block that off. Unless there's a special event, maybe the concession stand's not open, or, or some other reason that you might need access. But otherwise, it would be blocked off.
I've seen people park on up close and they go to the Lewis, there.
And that's, okay, that's something that. You know, council may, or, or just administratively have to make the decision of when it's blocked off and when it's not. The, the initial thought was definitely during baseball season, um if there's adequate parking. Uh, not utilizing the parking up Carlton Way, it would be ideal to block it off so that. You know, with concession stand going full tilt during baseball season, you don't, and then you got all fields being used, you're gonna have kids running around, pedestrians. Try to keep the vehicle traffic.
I think one of the things that I like this idea, cause one of the things that I believe we're gonna see is. That used to be one-way from what, May, April, April to June, just for the baseball season. Well, now you're not, there's been a, a huge increase in the park. there's been a, a huge increase in the park activity lately. If you haven't noticed, go down there. And then, now it's not just gonna be that baseball season, but if I understand correctly, this is opening up a whole new travel ball all summer, all fall, where this field could be used, so.
That's what they want, they're wanting to get as many tournaments in as.
Yeah, so it's not just gonna be that little bit of time, but that, that area up Carlton Way could be used all summer long, you know, and the new additions that.
Well, that's something you can always figure that out along the way. You've got bollards, you can go down there and remove them. If you want to open it, you can solve it, if you want to close it, and, you know, make that decision. As you see how.
Also, the highlighted location on your new parking, that's gonna create an access to your, uh, walking trail also. Just to bring traffic off of that, or people want to park there. Cause if you think about it, we don't have a tremendous amount of parking for the rail trail. People park at the fire station, they park there at the depot. There's not a tremendous amount of parking. With that access, it gives a tremendous amount of parking.
What's that gonna do for the entrance coming into the, like you want to park at the depot? Or you're turning into the Lewis parking lot, is that gonna?
Well, the thought would, would be that at, at determination before, if you're traveling from, um, the rest of the, from Good Street, when you get down to that sharp edge curve, that's where the one-way stops. At the end of that, which would still allow people to come in from Central Avenue to access the parking lot. But as soon as you make the turn onto the straight stretch, that's where, wouldn't make that turn, because that's where the, that was the discussion that was had with the safety committee. One other point, um, that we did discuss, I just wanted to bring up as a thought. Um, it appears, as we discussed, that a lot of that traffic is through traffic that's coming through there right now. If you go down there and observe for a while, you'll just, you'll see, I mean, we had ten, fifteen vehicles come down there and drive through while we were standing there talking about it. They want to stop and get it through, uh, to use the park. And so, um, we think that by installing speed bumps all the way along, not only does it control your traffic that is coming down there, but we think that that would likely deter some of the tru- through traffic, that it doesn't need to be going through there. It's now, as you mentioned, more highly-used area for pedestrians.
If you don't really want through traffic, um, or you want to minimize it. Or it's not that clear, it's less than a risk to the, 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 to the pedestrians.
Safety committee does recommend that change to be made.
Mayor, I, I'd like to motion to accept the, say, or take the safety committee's recommendation of making this a one-way street permanently, to make it a one-way street.
Motion. Motion and second. Any further questions? All those in favor? Uh, all opposed? So move, motion's carried. We are now moving to number eleven, the consideration of dumpster guidelines.
I would just add and put in some, um, the city of Beckley, what they do for dumpsters, what they require city of Fairmont and not with ours. So they, um, yeah, it's, that's ours, okay. Play open that. So, yeah, open one of. Ours just says the size and what they have to do. It doesn't say where. Right. It should have to put them. Um, this is Beckley's and it says that they have to be in the rear of any building or in the basement or other area where they're not, where they won't constitute a nuisance or be offensive to the public. So, and I think that's what we're trying to get at. So I thought that was just a pretty easy fix of. Saying that. Well, they did, but something's happened to that.
It's not accessible now for a dump, for a trash truck. I'm pretty sure that trash trucks might be able to get back behind it. You're talking about the liquor store and the dollar store. Uh, it's, it's.
I don't think there's actually enough adequate room to get back here now.
There's also, I, I did call White Cat Waste, which is, we, it's one of the garbage, and ask them about, um, if they have, if you have a, if you, if you require like a fence or something that we save the dumpster. And they said the only thing that causes them any issues is if you lock it and get to open it, or uh, if for some reason they can't get in there. That's the issue. Yeah. But they were okay with it. They didn't say that they couldn't lock it. But, I mean, if they're such, they're not gonna try very hard to get into it, so.
I, I had, I had, Mayor, I had originally asked this be put on there because there was some dumpster issues in a few places around town and they, people were getting in them and stuff was getting spread out. And I'd spoken, Mr. Light, about some of the instances and locations. And that's when we really got looking and seeing that we really didn't have, um, much of the ordinance there that addressed that. Um, I guess I would just recommend maybe that, I'll work with him, but maybe we can just look into what you gave us here and look into some places and maybe draft a, draft a northern's up or, you know, try to come up with a better idea, better plan. That would be better for the city, but also be fair to the, to the business owners, you know, not everybody's got a certain place they can stick their dumpster, but as a token, they don't need to be trash piling on top of it either, so.
And there is that, that's.
And how's that work for residential areas? So the, there's yard right in front of the yard, been up in months and months. And just sat in there, incidentally, I'd say, we don't see where, tell where.
Normally, the trash company, the second gets it.
Pretty least, sat in there, emptying the door, opening it. Some car laying there, never moved, but, um, could be moved or, or people may, in my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, we can call the, the trash company, whichever garbage company it is, and ask them, unless somebody's paying for it. Get down with them, look and, look at that too, because you're only supposed to have them as temporary.
Think they can do that or not, and there's cars not being moved from the front, to be regular.
Yeah, you'll call us tomorrow. There's a quick talk to me after.
Moving along to letters of support, number twelve, uh, for Fed County Foundation regarding their indoor recreation facility and the Southern Appalachian Labor School regarding their youth build.
So there's, we'll, we'll have to take these one at a time, but, um, if you can, uh, the, the preparation is silky.
You all read these?
Oh, this was, it was in the, in the, things.
You're looking at the ball court, are you?
Thank you. This part of this group, if you have any questions.
I'll move to help the mayor sign a letter of support.
The proper, the first and second motion, that the mayor signs a letter of support for the indoor recreation facility regarding Fed County Foundation. All those in favor? Uh, opposed? Motion is carried. Uh, the B section will be South's youth build program.
And this just has nothing to do with cause he's.
The motion?
I'll comment on that letter, just by a chief. So, the statement says the need for affordable housing that meets health, fire, and construction standards. I worked with the county for twenty years, and I've been the fire chief since nineteen ninety-seven, and those statements are not true. We did nothing but fight with John David and Souths in regard to meeting building code guidelines, fire guidelines, and construction. So what tells this council that they're gonna follow that now? I'm sorry, but it's the truth. Just giving you my input in regard to that. They have a terrible reputation when it comes to construction, fire safety.
Does want to move the table this as well?
I'll make a motion to, to, for you not to sign it. I don't know what we think. I'm gonna say that. Yeah, I'll second it.
I'll second it. All right, all those in favor of not signing a letter of support for the South's youth build program? Um, all those in favor of signing? All those opposed to sign? Uh, motion's carried. South's youth program bill has been. Number thirteen, the base pension report.
All right, police pension report for twenty-three, twenty-four, due to July, whatever it is. Uh, beginning balance was four million, eight hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and forty cents. Employee contributions were twenty-five thousand, six hundred and sixteen, seventy cents. Earnings were four hundred, ninety-one thousand, four hundred and forty-five and thirty cents. Total revenues was five hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty-four cents. Pay was two hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighteen cents. For a net income of two hundred and ninety-two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and thirty-six cents. The ending value was five million. Twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and seventy-six cents.
Yes, so it's your answer.
That we accept that report?
I second it. Motion and second to accept the police pension report. Any further questions? All those in favor? Uh, opposed? Motion is carried. Number fourteen, the city park treasurer position. Mayor.
I'd like to request that move to those items saying, at the time of the executive session, that we move them to after the department reports, maybe in.
Okay. You've already all of the department reports. Do you have anything for this?
I do have a, in this for, uh, the first thing I wanted to say is that Stormwater Awareness Week is September twenty-third, twenty-sixth, so have a party, celebrate. Yeah, everybody has enough. We gave these out, the Ugly Festival, so it's part of our education. Well, this is just, just a little question.
And, and you have a place down there in Allison, I'm sorry.
Talk about gutters and downspouts.
Gutters and downspouts.
Uh, so your homes, gutters and downspouts are very important because they funnel the water off the earth and away from your house. And it makes sure that you have protection on your home as well as walkways for your friends and family. And when it's, the water's flowing away from your home, then it helps you to protect your siding, your windows, your doors, and your foundation. Without gutters, the rain runoff will fall directly down against your home, seeping into the ground against your foundation. And it can cause your foundation to crack, and the rain runoff could also kill your landscaping. I don't have that brain off, brain not off to my mind, but. Um, and it, so it's very important for you to properly maintain your gutters. So I'll think about that. And then I have another thing, um, I just, we are starting to really enforce the abandoned vehicles and try, we're trying to get those cleaned up. They're like doing a good job of going out by an abandoned vehicle. So, um, I just want to give everybody a warning that that is starting to happen. And the other thing, which I didn't put on the agenda, we could put on for next month, but if you'll consider what you want to do with the November eleventh meeting, it's, it's scheduled for the eleventh, but that's a holiday. So if you want to change it, I would like, if you do change it, I'd like for you to consider November fourth, because I will be gone. But we, we can put that on the agenda. Um, I think it's early enough so that if, um, they have anything that we can still get at that.
Mayor, I'd like to motion to accept all of the rest of the department reports, reports collectively as they have been presented to the, in the council packets, and that they are available to the public on the story maps, like the public can see them on the story maps.
Second? Motion and second to accept all department head reports. All those in favor? Uh, all opposed? This time, we will move into executive session. Are you, any council comments now?
Um, the, I do have one thing, the Optimum installed the, I'm stopping there, and Optimum installed the fiber optic, finished it up today here, so the clarity and all that stuff should be on the channel four, that it should be sound and all, be a lot better. And it's good to see local programming back on TV.
I want to compliment everybody that worked on the Ugly Festival. It was a successful festival, and I appreciated it and enjoyed it. Thanks, everyone. Thanks to all residents who came out.
It was very good. And if you notice, um, on Kelly Avenue, the trucks were ten feet apart. And, and it still worked out good. We followed the Fire Marshal's rules. We were still able to do that with cooperation with the fire department. They worked with us, the street department, helped get all that done, so, um, fire department can get in there if they need to. So that was a, a good proactive effort for everybody, because that was a big change for Sondy. Changing, trying to.
Take the time to compliment, because I know there's people listening that don't live here, and was complimenting how the street department kept the trash continually. There's nev- there was never an overflow, there wasn't. I mean, there was several other cities represented here as far as, you know, just coming to the festival. And they spotted me and they came right over and they were like, they were gonna bring our guys over here so they can. And plus it was just, it just flowed. I mean, the guys, it just, it was just continuously. And the other cities take note of that, and, um, I know there's a few listening or will be listening. And they wanted me to make sure that I complimented the department and the police department and the fire department, everyone. Everyone takes a part in that. They really noticed how, how efficient the guys were.
Mayor, I've got two things I'd like to speak to. Just want to inform the council that we're going to have our ISO inspection in October or November. We don't have a date yet. That's where is their entire review of the Fire Department, its operation, its training, its equipment, its inspections. Then we get a determination on our insurance rates. So that will be done in October, November. And the State Office of Emergency Services announced today. This fall is critical in the entire state because of the drought situations we've had. They are expecting the, the brush fire and forest fire activity to be as bad as it was in 1991. And that was when the whole state was on fire. So we will probably be instituting a burning ban real soon in the city, as well as the entire county. So just looking at that.
You want to answer? All right. Now, operator for executive session.
We can all just leave. Y'all stay there.
I want to move into executive session. Mayor, I'm going to go into executive session.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to move into executive session and a second. All those in favor? Uh, all opposed. Motion carries. Now, take the break.
If we can do the conference calls, I don't know if ours, I have to invite Allison with us.
I can play on either side. Straight out here, the video would still be on, but...
All right, councilway will need a vote to resume our regular meeting.
Make the motion that we come out of executive.
Can you get a second?
A second.
Motion that we come out of executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. All right, folks, we will need to break at dawn items 14 and 15. The City Clerk position and the former Collins Middle School status. 14 is the City Clerk treasurer position.
This might be a lengthy motion, but in consideration of Valerie's lawns return to work, I move that contingent that first of all that the proposition as clerk treasurer is not available for her, but contingent upon her decision resign that position and take a job possibly with, excuse me, possibly with less pay under the supervision of the city manager that we advertise contingent upon that for a clerk treasurer for the city of Oak Hill.
Any one second? Say a motion.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, motion down a second. All of us in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion is also carried. So we will now move down to our future agenda items.
Yeah, I think that we need to put the councilor or whoever that we're going to put on for the vacant building, I think that needs to be brought up and be on it.
Committee?
Yeah, the committee. Because that's something really we need to move on. It's not something that needs to be put off, put off, put off.
Is that a committee you'd like a councilperson on?
Yeah, I think that it actually should be another, but council. Well, I mean, we can include like Allison or even Tyler. Bill's actually the one written ordinance that we have right now.
Any last? Any announcements besides the regular meeting will be October 14?
What is the drunk retreat? I've had a couple people ask me about that. What date was that set?
October 26th.
26th, okay.
We need, I think you all remember anyway, the date of the November 14th.
You guys will also try to remember in the nark and foxes, try to think of a good location.
That's another thing.
Put one there. All of you. All in favor of adjourned adjournment? All right, yeah, I say, good night everyone. Thank you for coming. Be late is adjourned.